Unauthorized camping. Sit down there.
I don't like to sit next to Eric because I feel like it's too close to the camera.
I thought that we're gonna get personal here. Denise already moved away from it. Like, okay, there's something wrong. Okay.
Get started here. So first, I just want to go over the agenda though. This is the fourth time, this is in front of the council, and it's the fifth if you count that when we had a council meeting last week, we did receive a lot of comments on this topic at public recognition. And so this started back on June 26th. We met again on the 5th for public comment. We received comments. We talked about it another study session on the 12th. And now we're back with the fourth study session July. Again, this is one of your goals for this year is to come up with a new ordinance for this section of our code. And this is the work that we're doing to get that underway. So I put down, like what I see is the questions that the council needs to consider to kind of start moving this forward. The last time we discussed whether there was going to be a repeal or an amendment, and it appeared that the council, a majority of the council were going forward with an amendment. I think it's consistent maybe with the goals that had been set out at the outset. Taking the lead from there, the first question is whether the council wants to see any limitation on camping on public property, even when there's no shelter space available. And so what that means is that there would be a time restriction or a place restriction that was in place, regardless of whether there was shelter space available. That was something that the night circuit said it was allowed. And many municipalities have taken that route and set up ordinances that have those limitations. If the council does not want to do that, does not want to have any limitations, they could, the council could just amend the code to restrict enforcement of the existing ordinance, our existing ordinance that says no camping anywhere, anytime, and restrict enforcement of that code to times when shelter space is available. Meaning when there's shelter space available, there's a restriction everywhere, all the time. It's not allowed at all. But when shelter space is not available, that is not going to be. And so that type of amendment is what Port Orchard and Paul both. So the, I see that as kind of an initial consideration. Most places, it appears have that as a feature of their code. Their codes kind of started out like ours where it says no camping anytime. They added that, but then they go on to additionally list some restrictions on camping, even when there is no shelter space available. So see that, those being some of like the professional questions. If you decide to go with having some limitations that are in place even when shelter spaces are available, then we need to decide what those are going to be, right? We prepared some additional material for your consideration. So you don't have the same packet again, over and over again. Like you have a bunch of new stuff. What Michael prepared was a review of other ordinances than the ones we'd looked at previously. And then he did a verbal review as well as a table form. And so hopefully catching our kind of visual and our kind of more narrative type learners there. It gives you some ideas of what other communities in Washington are doing. Both, as we've discussed before, there tends to be limitations on places. Sometimes there's limitations on times. And some have included manor limitations. We didn't get into those in the table. They, they tend to be like fires. You might see in the news sometimes encampments have been a source of fires, particularly if they're in wooded areas or and some places have restricted like the use of propane stoves. So what we attached is a draft ordinance like the ordinance passed by the Lakewood City Council. That was the one that seemed to have interest in most of the council. But it is modified. We took out everything that was Lakewood specific in the whereas's. But I didn't add in Bremerton specific ones at this time. Those would be added to a final draft. But I really, at this point, we kind of need to focus on those questions of what the limitations are going to be, or if we're even going to have them. And what can figure out where as is. But we're at another time. But this gave you an idea of what Lakewood looked like. It's definitely a draft. I wanted that to be very clear. And so I didn't mean to be somewhat obnoxious about explaining how draft-like this draft is because I didn't want people to get out, see it and be like, oh, this is what the city of Bremerton is doing. This isn't a normal process for a code amendment is being presented to the council. And it's, at least from the administration's perspective, a final form. This is something that I am assisting the council in drafting. And it's very draft-like. And you'll see it when you read it because there are sections where we have things that look redundant, but it's how different cities have defined certain terms. And so we put both definitions in there so that you could see the wording both ways. Obviously, you're not going to do both of them. And that's like on the definition, I think, of like public or shelter space.
Available overnight shelter.
Yeah, different definitions there. Some cities use protected waters. There was also critical areas instead. And so this was just to sort of put into paper and get sort start looking at what it's going to look like for Bremerton. And so I have Michael here. And to give you guys a heads up, I'm not going to be here at the meeting next week. He's going to be covering for me. Just to also thank part of why he's here tonight. So he'll be taking your input and, you know, getting things ready for you for next week. If we decide to go to council, I don't know where this is going to lead. If we're going to end up with another study session or whatnot, or we're going to just have something ready for you to go. So with that, if you guys have questions about what we provided, particularly the notes regarding camping ordinances, the table, the ordinance, we're here to answer them and to find out what you guys would like to see.
Perfect. And then timeline is certainly if we have a strong consensus tonight, we could.
Do it next week. Yeah, I don't have to be here. My plan is to prioritize them. But I do, Michael is going to be in person covering the meeting, just in case I have connected.
If we need an extra study session to keep it through.
Yep, I'll be back on the way.
Sure, I speak forever. I don't want to be at this forever. So yes, I guess we're looking for suggestions. Have to add areas that people might want to see off limits all the time. And let me make sure I got that right before we look for counsel.
Sure, yeah.
So I think you said that some areas are camping is still prohibited. Like, did you say that in parks?
So like our watershed has protection. And Michael actually has some more information on the areas of our code that are currently protected under different sections of our code. One of the, I guess, what I would say is challenges with that is that we do have a camping ordinance on the book. And it's pretty obvious that we're looking at this. We always want to, this is the one that people would look at of what code section fits for this situation. And so if, if it's, if the thought is, well, we aren't going to have those areas off limits because we have this other section code, I probably want to at least address that in our whereas's. So it's conscious, it's, I guess, noted.
Yeah.
And the reason I say that too is that there is a different enforcement theme under the other codes. They go criminal immediately. Our camping code does not. And so a violation of some of those other sections in, you know, immediately in this seminar, we're under our camping code. The third violation after two citations. But all of that is up for force amendment. But I guess what I would say is there are protections for other areas on the books elsewhere in the code. But when it comes to really enforcing that, when it's specific behavior is camping, it really makes sense to try to figure out where the council is on camping. And if it's that you are comfortable with those other codes we're taking, and I would probably just want to acknowledge that somehow.
Yeah, three or more.
Three or more.
Three or more contractions in a two-year period.
Well, if you're ready, I'm ready to critique this ordinance. This is the building block. Tell you what I like and what I don't like about it. And then with the understanding that other people may not be on the same page.
Sure.
But first of all, what I like about it, I like the wetland section. So I wouldn't leave that critical areas. Basically, no camping. The, and this is based on a lot of the public testimony that, the main hearing that we had, where we had the residents at MLK. And then we had people representing the unsheltered down at MLK. And I'm balancing the concerns. And also what I believe are the basic necessities of treating someone like a human being. And that's where I'm coming from here. So this, first of all, this business about you can't enforce the ordinance if there's no shelter space available. I'm definitely good with that. With the provision that I don't want it to open up, that means you can camp anywhere that's public space. That's what this implies, except for the critical areas.
Right.
I don't like that. Well, what I'm suggesting is that there is a dedicated area, whether it's one, two, three, or four, I don't know, within the city that we say this is okay for camping. That way the residents, and in this case on MLK Way, they're not camping out on the sidewalk. So there is a dedicated space. What I'm having a problem with is your unauthorized storage. And the business about you can't camp, you have to leave camp after nine, between 6:30 and 9:30 PM, you got to vacate. So let's say I'm down on my luck. All my possessions are on my back, my tent and whatnot. And you're telling me I have to get up by 6:30, clear my campsite. I have to carry all my possessions with me while I go look for work, while I go see services? No, I don't think so. What do they do at shelters? Do they require you to pack up and leave? Or is there, my understanding is sometimes they have places where you can have a locker and you lock your stuff up so you can go to your appointments and your treatment and try to get a job and try to get ahead. This is cruel. And I'm not trying, I'm not, you guys are just going with this one. But just let me voice my frustration. That's cruel. Okay? So again, I'm trying to balance. I want people, first of all, if everybody in the community does their job, we should have adequate shelter space. If not, then it's Plan B. We allow public camping in certain dedicated areas. It doesn't have to be all within the city of Bremerton. This is more than what's in the city of Bremerton. This is, as far as I'm concerned, throughout Kitsap County. It's a Kitsap county-wide thing. If Bainbridge Island doesn't have any provisions, any shelters, I guarantee you there's people from Bainbridge Island or down here experiencing homelessness because this is where, so it should be a Kitsap county-wide effort. Dedicated spaces. And, and so I wouldn't limit the hours. So if, I mean, there's, I'm not guaranteeing their security, but their belongings, they don't have to pick up at 6:30 in the morning. That's not realistic. I also think there's complaints about sanitation. Obviously, if you allow camping anywhere within the city, we can't have porta potties everywhere in the city. But if you have dedicated spaces, we can give people, I'm not saying, you know, this is the Motel 6. I'm saying a porta potty and some running water, for God's sake. So you can wash up while you go to your appointments and get your interview. Just the basic necessities. And again, the city is not on the hook for this. If we ensure that there are, and according to this ordinance, I'm okay with it, shelters within a 15-mile area. Maybe we want to tighten. I think that might be a little unrealistic, 15 miles. Maybe we want to tighten that circle. It says from the city of downtown, city of Bremerton or City Hall. I'm okay with that. But the other thing is we have to transport them over to there. And here's where I get into, this is a Kitsap-wide county problem. I've been thinking about this. It's a Kitsap-wide problem. Kitsap Transit, the board is all the represented, they're all elected officials. We can make it a priority with Kitsap Transit that wherever these shelters are, wherever these dedicated camping spaces are, that there's shuttle service so they can go to their, go to their appointments or whatnot. We can make it a priority because we're all sitting on board. That's where I'm getting at. Let's give these people a chance to get out of the situation they're in. And I just don't think the way this ordinance is written, that it's realistic. You're just beating these people down. You're just beating them down. So I'm not good with ordinance. If you tweak it the way I just stated, again, I want to hear public testimony. But I think it's a good balance.
And just, just to be clear, I did it off that Lakewood ordinance.
Oh, I know.
This is certainly not my ordinance.
I know. And it's a starting point. We need to have a talking point. And, and based on the examples, I looked at, no one has what I just described, based on those examples. So.
The time limit limitation or the?
Yeah, throwing that out. And just what I described, does one of the cities have what I just described?
Basically a tent city.
See, no, but be careful on the tent city. Here's the deal on that though. If the city does its job and we have adequate shelter, I should say if the county does its job and we have adequate shelter space, there is no tent city. Okay? So I've been spending time and my YouTube algorithm now is, guess what I get on my YouTube channels, right? So I don't know if it's successful or not, but San Diego, if you Google that one, they have this thing. No, this is, this, this, I really don't want to go down this road, but I think we have to. They actually have shelters. They're basically all the same kind of tents. I know our climate's different and all that stuff. But again, if they're, they're only utilized, emergency level only, as an outlet, a relief valve, if there's a lack of shelter space. If we have enough shelter space, they're not used. And then there's no camping anywhere within your city limits. And I think this ordinance, whatever we adopt, should be county-wide. And don't tell me that's not realistic. Because on this council, I remember, and I don't want to equate one over the other, but Kitsap Bean Society said, you know, our rules are really difficult when each jurisdiction has different rules for animal control. We need to have county-wide rules. Guess what? That's kind of what, we could have a county-wide ordinance on addressing camping and have these relief valves put in place. And hopefully they're never used. We know that they probably will be until the, the capacity increases. But unless someone can convince me otherwise, that's, I'm kind of dug in.
Keep going around here. Are there thoughts on the, yeah, and again, to clarify, the majority of council last time directed attorneys to draft based on Lakewood ordinance. So that's what's come back to us, is based on Lakewood. Any other comments from council? Yeah, Denise.
You know, I see this element as part of a whole continuum around housing. And I would like to think that if we had adequate shelter available, emergency shelter, low barrier, no barrier shelter, that there would be no people that would choose to live on the street. But I don't believe that's true, for whatever reason. Whether it's their issues that they're fighting with or their, their history with certain agencies, whatever it is. The very edge of the continuum, that's what we're dealing with right now, I believe. And when we talk about affordable housing, it's in that continuum too. But that's why people have been screaming. Affordable housing isn't the answer to this particular issue because it's a different population. It's a different demographic. They can shift, right? And I am so encouraged when I hear Councilman Younger talk about this. Because I think all of this council believes in a basic level of human dignity. And so yes, definitely when other shelter isn't available, there's still going to be a need for what you're talking about. And that might not even be attractive to a certain element of people. So whatever, but it does, I believe that what Councilman Younger is talking about, designating spaces serves, best serves the community that we're talking about. And making sure that they have that full continuum of services is something I think that we can insist on, whether it's county or city. And so that's why I'm always interested in, wait a minute, why are we considering this when we, we know that we're losing, you know, Kitsap Rescue Mission, when they're moving into the new shelter and, and that's now in the Quality End here in Bremerton, moving to Port Orchard. And yet, I think administration is doing a lot of work that we're not even aware of on this. And I, I do believe that the mayor, when he, when he tells us that he's working on making sure that shelter, we maintain our shelter space. Don't lose that, right? But what Councilman Younger is talking about is really the first solution I've heard of to long-term services of a more permanent, doesn't have to be permanent-permanent, but you know what I mean. It's there. And if we have to pay somebody to run it with the county, so be it. But the service, the lack of services is what I'm most concerned about. And then that the A word, or excuse me, the E word, enforceability. How is whatever we introduce going to be enforced? Is it going to be enforced? Because I hear, we'll enforce everything, anything council says we have. And then I hear at the next meeting about fireworks, that's not enforceable to that full extent because we've got more. Okay, I'm getting a grasp of all that. I'm always going to put domestic violence first. Having said that, we need an ordinance that will be a tool for our police department to use to protect those citizens that Councilman Younger was referring to. And I, it has to be services and enforcement. And so actually, before I would support anything, I want to get assurance from the administration that we're on this. And by the time we pass something like this, we're not going to be at a lower capacity than we were when we first started talking about it. Need to increase capacity. And I was one of those people that said, the county doesn't do enough. The county doesn't do enough. What I'm saying tonight is that the county, yes, the county has a responsibility. I don't necessarily want to check from them to deliver services in Bremerton. You know, I would like to see these kinds of facilities all throughout the county so that people who are really on hard times have a place like that to have safe and humane shelter, even if it's in their own town.
So can I start asking all that? Because I know this is a, a huge umbrella of dealing with homelessness. You know, attorney's been out presented before, this small, small piece. So out of all, out of all that, was there a specific suggestion for crafting the ordinance? I just want to make sure it wasn't lost.
I agree that we need protected areas very strongly. I don't think anybody would disagree with that. I, I do like the idea of protected areas for the homeless as well. And that's a har, a lot harder to enforce when it's spread out all over rather than having a place for them to, to camp more safely. That's where I am with it. So yeah, I would be for, with the, with the services.
No, I guess I'll make sure everything's, everything's clear.
So I'm just going to quickly recap what I said at the last study session, which is, I'm in the minority. I think we should repeal this ordinance and then work on drafting a better one. But I know I'm out loaded on that. The second thing I'm going to repeat is that the audit committee has been looking at potential parcels. They haven't been vetted by the department heads. But one parcel that I mentioned two weeks ago is immediately behind the Chevron Station on Oyster Bay Avenue. It's between the Chevron Station and Public Works. And that's an area that Public Works plans to expand northwards into when funds become available and after the sewer under Oyster Bay Avenue are constructed. Okay. Okay. That is a possible location for a pallet city. I've brought these up again, places that are, they have a proper roof. They have insulation. They have heat. They have AC. They have smoke detectors. They have electricity, obviously. And these are typically grouped around a single central facility that has toilet, you know, that has plumbing, which is, you know, plumbing, toilets, laundry, showers. This would require somebody to maintain that. But this is a strategy that has worked in the past. And Tony Ives of KCR has recommended this.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, I'm trying to get some lights.
The lights are, yeah.
I look good in the job. One of the things that I was thinking about today is, do you remember when the woman was raped in the elevator at the parking garage? We are paying $100,000 a year for two security guards to cover the three parking garages that the city owns. Would it not perhaps be possible to haul them over to Martin Luther King Way until the Blake fix kicks in on August 14th? And the actual criminals who are praying, I'm coming right back to the ordinance.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, so that's one possibility. I think in this ordinance, the $1,000, it's just completely out of whack. I mean, if you're going to be assessing somebody a fine, but it, if you're homeless, you don't have $1,000. I echo Counselor Younger's statement because it's like, when you are living rough, keeping an eye on your stuff, keeping your stuff together, schlepping your stuff from one place to the next, it takes up, it takes up a lot of time. I think these are things that we can fix to create a temporary shelter. And I think that's the most urgent need. The, the time, the, the time part of this, I think, is no. Because you can't just break down your home every morning and, you know, put it up again. Yeah. The normal thing of, yeah, you're not going to camp, you're not going to have camping areas that are near wetlands or streams or steep slopes or aquifer recharge areas. I mean, that just makes sense. I mean, you don't want to have like trespassers there. That's, you know. Ukraine was able to do this, like in the middle of bombing. They were able to put up camps that had Wi-Fi and heat and everything. And I think we can too. And I think that's more important than this ordinance. But I have no other specific comments on this ordinance, so I'm stopping. All right.
My call. Okay, do you want?
Just so I can jump in, not to address every comment that you made, Counselor Maufer, but I did want to talk about the violation section that you referenced. Again, this came from the Lakewood ordinance. And I just wanted to explain, it's not a thousand dollar fine, it's a, a fine of not more than a thousand dollars. That's typical for misdemeanors. They're generally ninety days in general, a thousand dollar fine. That's the, the typical limits, upper limits on misdemeanors. The, the, the thing that was unusual about Lakewood is that, if you note at the bottom, it says the third, so for the city of Birmerton's current ordinance, the, the first two offenses, I think are infractions. First three.
Let me look at it again.
Yeah, so we have, we start with infractions, we don't start with, with Yeah. Lakewood started with criminal violations, and on the third one, it was five hundred in five days, but they did note, consistent with a, a separate court decision. As you know, that the court shall make an inquiry as to the person's ability to pay, person is unable to pay the voluntary penalty set forth in one, two, or three, the court is explicitly authorized to order for any meter. I'm just saying, you know, the, the thousand dollars is not a thousand dollar fine, the court could certainly impose zero. Except if it's on three and, and the subsection three, then they need
I said I had stopped talking, so I shall.
Michael. So I actually agree, I think, with everything that Eric said. And I like the idea of at least trying some designated spots. I think Council President last time did mention that, that, that sort of establishing tent cities was not a recommended possibility, but I, I don't know. Anyways, it's something that I would be following. And then I, it's great ideas and, and needs to do stuff. But it's not part of what we're trying to do tonight. I like, that, excuse me, the kind of wetland kind of stuff. Somebody recently mentioned that somebody was sleeping in a culvert under, I guess that's Kitsap Way, is my understanding. And, and that could be, that could be dangerous also if something happened with tides or water or things like that. So there's two reasons, one, obviously water supplies and, and protected areas. Some places can be dangerous, so I like that. I kind of had brought up the, an idea of maybe also kind of following what we might to put in a liquor store. Maybe a certain, a certain amount of distance from schools, playgrounds, that kind of stuff. Because we, we know that there is drug activity sometimes, not everybody, but it does happen there. And we also have a population with mental health issues also. So when we talk about vulnerable people and protecting vulnerable people, I think we could follow maybe a model that looks, looks like that. And then just, you know, create a, a little bit of distance. I'm not, you know, I, I'm not sure if that's would make a difference or not, then, but kind of back to how do we deal with moving forward with this and some of these ideas? By the way, I, I was thinking of that exact lot in my head up behind the Chevron. And, but we could write this and then say like, if no designated camping areas are available or shelter beds, then this is not enforced, right? So we could kind of build in that it's going to take a while to put something together. And so wherever it might be, or maybe in a couple places. And, yeah, and it probably, I will say on the security idea, it probably needs a different type of security than our, our folks that are downtown. We're going to need probably a commitment from police and fire and maybe to do some wellness checks. You know, we know that the porta potties have been a problem there, which has been the holdback on us getting them. Not there, but we have done the porta potties before and there's been, they've been problematic. And, and that's why we can't get service. So I think that unless you have a question about what I'm saying. Okay, so I think I'm, I think I said what I wanted to say. So, but basically like it, I really, you know, I, I, there's, there's a nice idea behind, oh, and they'll just put away their things. And, you know, we won't see them during the day, it's just, that's, it's, it's wrong, we can't do that. And, yeah, I think that it needs to be, we can't put them out somewhere on Warner Road or something like that, you know, that they have to be near some transportation or we have to provide some transportation. There should be some sort of security, I mean, yeah, like, I, I, I like these tiny home areas and things like that. I'd love to see us do that, and that could be something that people could also kind of check into. But I think we need multiple communities because I think that there's going to be tensions and people might not want to deal with other, you know, people in the community. We probably all don't want to live together, so.
Can I say something to build on Michael's comments?
Let me just check if Quinn had anything.
I, I do, but Eric, go ahead.
So I, I like Michael's suggestion that said that this, you know, camping ordinance is not enforceable if there are no sheltered spaces or designated camping spaces. And so that's going, doesn't have to be codified, the exact locations in an ordinance will suggest you don't. That's the administration to determine where designated camping spaces are, but we'll have to add a definition in your or, in our ordinance to what is a designated camping space. So I like that part very much. So when a homeowner, a resident calls the city and says, I got people camping on my sidewalk, what are you going to do about it? Well, the city can do something about it, instead of throwing their hands up and say, oh, you know, it's a sign of the times, we're trying our best, whatever. No, city, you can come up with a designated camping space and then that person can have a place to go. So it's really on the city to do something. So I, I like that a lot. There was another thing that you mentioned, but I'm having one of those moments. So I'll, I'll let Quinn.
Perfect. Go over to you, Quinn.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I agree with a lot of what's being said. I think the biggest thing that this discussion should be leading us towards is how to fund shelters, right? How to fund, making sure that beds are, beds are happening. I think the balance is, well, until that happens, what neighborhoods, what streets, what areas are absorbing the brunt of the social issue that is houselessness? And so I'm split between a couple of thoughts. The first being, if we are going to do a designated space area, I think we need to do it equitably and choose a space in every single district. That kind of cuts against the putting resources in a certain area. So I'm not sure how we decide what areas are going to be those designated spaces. It sounds like the council so far believes that a time restriction would be inhumane because people would have to pack up their belongings every single day. I'm leaning towards that as well. But I, I think punting the issue isn't the best idea that we could do. I, I, I think we need to, if we're actually going to come up with space requirements, we need to come up with those as a council and, and not just punt it to the administration. With the administration's guidance and Attorney Fennell's guidance as far as liability issues that surround those. You know, there's, there's a hat that I'm wearing as a council member, but I also know that there are liability issues. And, and maybe that's my question for City Attorney Fennell. If we do do space designations without time restrictions and basically say, hey, here's a city plot where you're able to camp twenty-four seven, what is a liability requirement that we would need to provide safety or any other sort of services there based on that designation?
So what I'm going to go over with you is some information I received on that issue from our, the risk pool. They provide insurance, of course, for hundreds of entities in the state and some of which operate tiny house villages, tent cities, that kind of thing. And this is sort of their checklist of things that they are looking for in the people they insure. I'm not saying that all these things have to be addressed, but it's something that they want to know whether or not we are doing these things. And so first, it's been discussed water and sanitation, prevention of fires such as fire extinguishers and sprinklers and any structures that are constructed, a source of outdoor heat or a source for heat for outdoor mitigation sites, and how is that provided? Public safety within the encampment or shelter, and I think that is usually like an attendant or security guard, a person who's on site. Controlled access. Often they are fenced in areas so that the people in there feel safe and it keeps out people who are not living there. So it provides security as, as well as who can enter the facility. They also had, whether there's a exit and eager risk plan in case of fire or emergency, that that is, residents are informed and that you have basically a plan in place for people to evacuate, like you do for buildings, for employees and things like that. Emergency accessibility for fire, medical and police that you can be accessible. A code of conduct and rules for behavior, they want to see funky of that, if you can have that. Written acknowledgements or agreements for behaviors, something like that. And also like, how are those enforced? Is it self policing? Is it done by some sort of outside agency that might be a partner? And allowing animals in them at the mitigation sites, whether that's allowed or not allowed. If you do, you require that they be on leash, if you come, or is it old service animal? A plan that addresses the accommodation and special needs such as handicap accessibility and whether or not tents are kept off the ground, using pallets or something else. Is there contact or something for excess personal property, either onsite, offsite, secured or unsecured? How are they going to access, who's going to secure it, that kind of thing? A plan to address the presence of rodents regarding food, garbage. Whether you have a contractor for that purpose as a site, whether you plan to screen for sex offenders and whether it be refusal of entry or segregation person's sex offender, and whether it will be a, a low barrier entry model, meaning there's no requirement to be drug free or sober upon entry and how will that be screened for? And if there will be any like behavioral health navigators to serve them, hooked at that. Kind of like just understanding what that person's going to be providing care, like, are they? What is the relationship to the people who live there? And so that was, those were some of the questions that they asked. So there's a lot to think about to, to set one of these sites up. It's not a it, it, it involves more than just finding a place. So they, they need to have services there, and there's a lot of considerations, but they're certainly not unable to be overcome. Everyone does it, it just gives you an idea of what other cities have, like the, the things that they have needed to address and set these things up.
Thank you for that. And I also, it's been a while since I've done housing discrimination, but I also believe some HUD laws, some federal laws would attach as well. If, I, I believe shelters ask people to leave so that they don't become landlords and, and have HUD laws or federal housing laws attached to them. If, if we were to do that, I'm assuming some federal laws around housing would also attach. Is that your understanding as well?
I don't know specifically on HUD laws, whether they're applicable to sites. They could be, I could look into that. I mean, obviously just with reading this, you know, their concerns, there's ADA issues, so that's federal law, right? If it HUD attaches, I know the service animal requirement to housing and that kind of thing. And so I'm, I'm guessing it's certainly something we would need to look into because there's some other requirements as well.
So thanks for that. So that was, your, your answer was kind of confirm my suspicions that basically if we were going to designate a place without other restrictions, like time restrictions, we, basically the city of Birmerton would be becoming a landlord with all the liability that attaches there.
There definitely needs some liability. I mean, I, I would, you know, landlord is a specific legal term, as you know, under RCW. So I would say we would certainly be taking on responsibilities because we would be providing a, a site for a specific purpose. And so there's going to be responsibilities attached to that.
Right, we would be basically granting a license, not like contracting with individuals. I, this is where I think we need to be funding nonprofits that know these laws in and out, that can provide the services in the best way possible. I, I think, I think we need to be putting our money towards some private public partnerships and focusing on, you know, hopefully we'll, we'll continue with the Audit Committee's assessment of what land could possibly be used. But I, I, I hope everybody heard this exhaustive list or non-exhaustive list of issues that need to be considered as we go through this. So I, I, I think I'm against just designating certain areas without thinking through all of the ramifications that go along with it. I, I think that it's a lot more complicated than folks are making it seem to be.
I'll take mine round here and go around to. Yeah, I was like, like, sorry, great discussion so far. Same, I'll start big and then kind of narrow down specific ordinance. I think echoing everybody here, I'm so supportive of services if folks who need it. I mean, I look at Pendleton Place as the, the prime example. You have permanent housing, you have onsite services, you have support. That's, that's seventy-two beds in Birmerton that just went live, you know, the other year. That is to me the gold standard and all the experts find a way to, to really help people long term. And I, I want to see Birmerton do its part. I've also spoken about how we're, we're seventy percent of the county's population. By the latest point in time survey, we have sixty percent of unsheltered folks here. So we are, we're already doing more than our fair share and we're the fourth per capita, so I know our service is limited. And we're dealing with what I think is a failure at the national level for treating mental illness and the state and national level for addressing homelessness, you know, countrywide. That said, going back to Councilman Goodno's statement, yeah, the, the book I was reading, you know, made a difference between regulated encampments and unregulated encampments. And what it recommended against was unregulated encampments. Honestly, kind of like we see right now in an okay way and some other parts of the city. Certainly, if you have a, a regulated encampment with support and services, that's getting closer to a Pendleton Place type model. But when you do the unregulated encampments and, and either encourage or allow those to form, then you get the negatives associated with that, that's just a lose, lose for the folks experiencing homelessness for the, the community and all of that. I think there's a great comment about, is there some percentage of the population that may never take shelter spaces available, even a Pendleton Place? Absolutely, I can't tell you what percentage it is. I think that's always going to, going to be there. And I do, I do worry about what if we never have enough shelter space in Birmerton? Hopefully we'll get there, but I think it's something to think about. So going back to the ordinance, when we're asked to weigh in on, I, I do think we do need to carve out time or space restrictions. I agree, the timeline, I think, is tricky to enforce. The only pro to that is, is it does prevent the unregulated encampments from forming. If folks are, you know, having to move back and forth. But I do know what a burden that would be on somebody to constantly pack up and move every single day. So I, I, I know that's a, that is a tough one. What, I was reading some other codes, this is what I'll propose, and I think it jives, maybe it's other comments. Is that we do have on the code the ability for nonprofits to create basically regulated spaces, call them encampments or just regulated areas for, for folks to, to be at. I might propose some sort of buffer, say like five hundred feet from any park, playground, community facility or school. And that would be enforced at all times, whether there would or wouldn't be shelter space. Park, playground, community facility or school, um, and that would be enforced at all times, whether there would or wouldn't be shelter space. Um, happy to, you know, amend that one or, or discuss it more, but I think carving out. Um, in addition to environmental areas, some other areas of concern, uh, that would be off limits, uh, whether there's shelter space or not. Um, and then of course, you know, outside this ordinance, making sure that we have those community partnerships to. Uh, so let's say it's literally, no matter what, that would still leave a lot of room where camping is allowed when there's no shelter space, um. And then at the same time, work on the resources for, um, having the supportive places. So I guess when we go into round two, um. Do we want to quickly recap as far as the ordinance goes, what some specific suggestions are and see if we have, um. Consensus on some of them. I'm just going to look around the table here, um, I'm just see, yeah, I'm good with like what I, everything that I've kind of. Heard, I know I haven't heard a lot of contradictory ideas.
I, I'd like to address, um, and I think they're extremely valid points that are to attorneys brought up. And regarding to feasibility, whether this is a pie in the sky idea. The first thing I want to say is by doing nothing. Sooner or later, and again, my darn YouTube algorithm points me at all these cases. Uh, Portland's a fascinating example where you had people up to recently were like, uh, you know. Very, uh, pro-houselessness advocates. And then they want to sell their house or it really affects their neighborhood. And now people are threatening to sue the city. Or nuisance properties because in public spaces. So by doing nothing, the city is opening themselves up to liability as well. So we can't just. Sit on our hands and do nothing. That business model is going away. We have to do something. I do agree, um, that we. Because of the resource limitation, whether it's contracted or it's city, and believe me, I prefer to contract with a, with a. Private entity or nonprofit, but I don't see a lot of nonprofits chomping at the bit saying, hey. Let me, so let's be real, realistic here. We're, we're in, in this business about this should be done at the national or state level. Totally agree, but guess what? I have no control over that. I have control over this. I'm one of seven. I have control over this. Okay, so as far as I'm concerned, the buck stops here. It's time to do something. Um, all the litany of lists are just suggested best practices. I don't believe this insurance pool says we have to do every. You didn't say they did have to do all one of these things. These are just things to look at. We had public testimony, we had letters written in, uh, for houseless advocates. That were saying, yes, we want rules enforced. We want people that are breaking the law to be prosecuted. So I suggest, um, and, and because of economies of scale, you're only going to have one or two camping sites in the city. Maybe they can be rotated if this is going to be a long-term thing. Okay, so we can all have our fair share eventually, right? Um, whatever, you know what I'm saying? As far as talking about equity, uh, and. To me, be careful about saying five hundred feet or whatever, because before you know it, you're going to look at a map and you're just going to be no place to put these places. Be careful about that one. The, the point is, uh, we're going to have to work through it. And, uh, if we could pass the ordinance, and it's not enforced at all until we work out all the mechanics. But as long as we're good on the solid fundamentals, I don't think it precludes us from passing something. And then as we work through the mechanics of trying to implement, working with the mayor. We say, oh, no, this isn't going to work. This isn't going to, then we tweak it, but we're doing nothing now.
But doing them, we're all on the same page as what's proposed. Can I go over whiteboard and just? I want to fix, try to capture kind of all the suggestions that are on the table. Tell me if we're not, we're wrong then. Um, for the suggestion of designate, um, specific spaces. For, uh, for camping. For me another about, you know, X feet from.
President Coughlin, I think you have a PhD in astronomy, if I'm correct, and you spelled spaces wrong.
Yeah, like it's supposed to be a C, thank God.
Okay, I'm just saying, you know.
That X feet from.
From parks.
That's, did anyone propose that?
Yeah, well, like, the liquor ones tend to be parks, playgrounds, schools.
Okay, schools, critical areas.
Yeah, you can say, you know, the list, whatever.
Critical areas.
Yeah, and then I don't think I've heard any, but time is out, it sounds like.
Critical areas.
She wants you to write.
Okay, so. So.
I had his eyes.
Here is where i- if the time, I'll say time is the asset. But if time is a critical thing for this thing to work. Where people have to pick up. A compromise, just thinking out loud, you don't, you know, that's all wrong, is that. At these camping, these designated camping spaces, that they have to pick up their stuff. So you don't want the landlord thing or whatever. There is a place to store their stuff and they can come back to it, a s- a safe place. See what I'm saying? So they're, 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 they're not, you don't. It takes work to do that. And so that might give you an incentive, and I don't know everyone's, everybody has a different story. But i- if, if, if you have to get in a routine where you got to pack up your stuff, and I'm not say six thirty in the morning, goodness gracious, I gotta. The college age kid, six thirty in the morning, no, that's not happening. So anyway. But whatever that time model is, if it's, well, you got to clean up your campsite, which might be a good thing, clean up your campsite so it doesn't. Um, but then you have a designated area. You know, I remember when I first moved here. That, uh, I got a, I had a locker for my bike down at the ferry terminal. I don't know, they probably still won't have that or whatever, but something like that where you put a padlock on it. You don't, the city doesn't have, you know, you have your padlock and then for whatever reason, they can't invite, the city can cut it off, whatever. But a safe place to put your belongings, maybe that's a compromise where you got to pick up your stuff. Put it away and then you can pitch your pen again that, that night. That could be a compromise. I don't know. It's just one of those things that are. Just throwing up. This is about brainstorming. That's the whole point of doing the whiteboard. It's not criticize someone. That's where great ideas come from.
Just throw it up.
You understand what time is possibility means.
So time as.
Restriction.
Yeah, time restriction as these places, um. Looking, I'm looking at other cities, the attorney, I don't really want to give an example, I think, I think most people say they disagree.
Yeah, that, yeah.
Yeah, that's really long of you.
That, that language in that.
So I was going one at a time, yes.
Yeah, I was just going to add that, there, I think at some point previously, somebody had expressed a desire to at least see what a time restriction would look like. And so that, that part in this ordinance is not actually in Lakewood's ordinance, but that language is lifted. From directly from Long, these ordinance, although I should add, they, they. There are some areas that are off limits at all times, or sorry, during those times. No, strike that, sorry, it's been a long bit. So, but they, they have areas also that are off limits at all times. Is what I was trying to get at.
Some that are only, that are time restricted. Like you can be at, like in a park, for example, during daylight hours, but you can't stay there overnight. But, um. In Portland is the one that we discussed previously, after two study sessions ago, that did the time restriction reason. Although I didn't hear that they have not started enforcing.
When you have others missing or they're.
Well, um, we've not talked about this, but it's something, another thought I had is put this into me, but. Like size, like, so you, so you can't like take a tent and then tarp it. You know, and then add a, a RV and that. You know, and I'm sure the fire marshal, excuse me, the fire marshal would love to have spaces between tents or not more than. Like when I, when I do a festival, I can't have more than seven, seven hundred square feet.
Yeah, we have, there are some cities that have those, like, that you can't pick up more than a certain footprint.
Yeah.
Um, because, um. It, you know, it could get really large. Like, you know, I think people in their minds think of like a maybe. Four person tent, but you could have like a year.
So th- th- this, um, the reality is, so. So recently I used to have to push to Seattle Soto. And, uh, the, the street behind First Avenue. At one point in time, uh, people were building wooden structures, two-story structures on the street. So again, when you talk about structure, i- if. If you have the, you have to, I'm not saying pick it up every day or whatever, but that would help preclude someone from. That never wants to leave and wants just build something, but you could also. Have other protectionisms that prevent it as far as space and what material.
To, um, go back to the ninth circuit case, which kind of, you know, started these conversations, the. Um, Brad's past case did look at what was, um, required to be permissible. To survive the analysis of the court and it was. Rudimentary protection of that from the elements of all that was required. And so, um. The, yeah, the two-story wood, you know, structure, they were looking at whether or not you could actually have sleeping bags. And they said that you, that was, um, rudimentary protection of the elements, but so restriction on what. A person can, can use in this situation, um, I think is permissible, I mean, you know, as far as like. Building structures to the side of the. In some states.
All, all the good terms, but I think this covers part of the general ability that other cities have.
Yeah, just under time, the majority does not want any time restriction.
This is not what we're agreed on. This is just the possibilities that I. Yeah, yeah, sorry. This is not a consensus list. This is just, I want to make sure.
Got it.
We're starting to focus on what the possibilities are. Yeah.
The other thing was enforceability. Are we in agreement? It's, it's not enforceable. If there are no. The no camping ordinance is not enforceable if there are no shelters, designated shelters. And no designated camping spaces.
Available.
Get clarity on this first right off. That's what we can craft. We can say. For example, this X feet from parks, schools, community centers is always enforced, whether there's shelter space or not. But then other provisions aren't enforceable if there is not shelter space.
Yeah, sure. Yeah. So you could incorporate that into your definition of available shelter space.
Okay.
You could say, or city designated camping area, even though right now we don't have one. And so. If the city wanted to increase its capacity under that definition, obviously you have. They've built into a code already. I think Portland code has that already. They have something, I think, in there about. This mayor designated camping area. We could craft that into the availability of shelter space.
And I think the fifteen mile thing, it, it is just too much. Um, you know, a designated shelter within fifteen miles, getting to Fort Archer, going through forests. Who's going to do it? Where are people going to wait? It's, it's just a. Got to be like closer than fifteen miles. It's got to be something people can actually get.
And turn panels that where the, um, fifteen miles came from of that street from Lake Water, was that based on?
Yes. Yeah, and so I like what I think is addressing a specific issue where they, um, they have partnered with the city of Tacoma. And they have said that it is a part of an I L A, um, uh, supporting efforts in Tacoma. And. It's like that. They, they are, their shelter spaces are not within their city limits. They're in Tacoma.
And just with our, our geography here, the water and stuff. It, it almost would have to be further to, just to be able to find spaces. Um, but I think we would at least find transportation. But, yeah. It's a long walk.
The dangerous one.
A skinny bridge.
So. My question is, is the city going to be, um. Willing. What, what is the city going to be willing to do besides designate spaces? So we've got this ordinance, there's some restrictions all around it. If we were to contact. Uh, nonprofit agencies and ask them if they are interested in supervising these designated spaces for camping. Um, all of that is going to cost money. Um, and while I wouldn't want to put. Any kind of a super permanent funding mechanism into an ordinance. I was intrigued with putting in a mechanism. Within an ordinance to kind of fill the gap for services, maybe for a three-year period. I don't know. It just feels like I don't have any, any faith. And other than de- designating spaces, that, that there is going to be money. To operate those spaces. And so if we've got liability concerns. Which a shelter provider would take on if they assume this role as well as the city, you know, but it would be. We'd be sharing the responsibility with this nonprofit partner. Um, that's going to cost money. And they're going to say, no, we can't do that on top of everything else we do. And so we're going to be left. With either a, a space that has an incredible amount of liability because we're not going to provide those. Shelters with the sprinklers and the, you know, all of that. I, you know, I don't have a lot of, I think there's a lot of. Emotion or a lot of psychological support, uh, for making sure that, that we can fill the gap in services. And maybe the mayor has a plan that is going to fill those gaps and he's got, I have an email. That where Salvation Army said they would be willing to consider the operation of any emergency shelter or other kind of service. In Bremerton. So we know that there is at least one nonprofit involved. I have no idea how much any of that would cost, no idea. And I, I'm hesitant to put in a funding mechanism. If I have no understanding of how much it's going to cost, but I'm also hesitant passing an ordinance where there's no acknowledgement. Of, of that.
Let's go there and then I'll talk.
Um, to. Your concerns about the liability issues, I, I, I am not a, a human services expert at all, but I have done a lot of. Reading about it, probably similar to what Mr. Young read, some kind of an expert when you start your algorithm, you know, things your way. Those aren't, the things I talked about were not just, uh, liability issues. It is actually, um. Seems to be when the, those sites are often, um. Successes or failures. And, and it's not a failure for the city, it's a failure for the people who live there.
Yeah.
And so a lot of those things and like addressing them, like learning from the other municipalities and the states and things like that. Um, and what needs to be in place so that the people there are safe and they have the security and the services they need, um. To transition out of there, um, are kind of what's in address in there. And there's certainly, there's some liability issues. I just wanted to reframe it that it's not just about, um, all the city attorney's concerned about liability. It is actually about functionality. And so, so that it's a good place for people to go, um, that. It, and positive things happen there instead of tragedy.
Can it be a po- public health model? Can the county out of its public health department operate said program? You know, I have no idea. It's certainly a public health concern. Um, I don't know. I know that, that this is tipping the iceberg of what, you know, I really do know that. And I don't mean to take too much time with it, but. I just believe in services and, um, I think we're all agreed that. It's not going to be, we're not going to be able to enforce this at all if there are inadequate shelter.
And then the funding, um, you know, you and I discussed this. We can't allocate money funding in this ordinance. I just want to make that clear.
Well, no, I mean, like, it's, it's just not the right, that the right place to do it. I mean, the council's going to be jumping into budget decisions, so.
Right, like would do it?
No, they, they acknowledged what they had already done.
Yeah.
But they did it.
Right, so we can acknowledge.
I, I see they went through another. I, I see they went through another process.
It's not in an ordinance.
They just mentioned it in the ordinance.
It's in the, it's in the whereas is where they acknowledged that they had already made that allocation, it's not codified in the ordinance. An acknowledgement of what they did.
We'll go to Quinn, cause his head is standing up online a while. Probably tired. But the officer works on this list and see if we got kinda majority on some of these specifics.
Yeah, thank, thank you Attorney Finnell for kinda clarifying around that, you know. The laws are created from a policy standpoint and usually liability is meant to incentivize good behavior, right? Like we have liability around sexual harassment because we want the employer to be really proactive and create a safe environment for people, right? So, uh, thank you for clarifying that it's, it's about the behavior that we want to be looking at and the law supports that behavior. I'm in full agreement with Councilmember Frye. I think that anything that we do that does not have a monetary aspect behind it is going to be. For lack of a better word, cruel. I- i- if, if we're not gonna do it in this ordinance, then we need a commitment during the passage of this ordinance. That we're gonna set aside a certain amount of funds for either private public partnerships or specific fund that the administration can draw upon. I, I'm in complete agreement with that, which leads me to the next logical question. Do we know how many, right, like the Ninth Circuit decision states that you can't have restrictions on camping unless. You know, you have these time place ones, if there are no available beds. Do we know how many beds would be needed in order to be in conformity with a, a complete ban? Let's, let's say we wanted to keep this on the books, which I, I know none of us do. But how many shelter beds are, are needed from the last in-time count? Does anybody have that information?
So I think the quote, the question was to you, you have a few answers.
I don't know the answer, but the. Yeah, I, I, it's, what most cities are doing is. They establish some sort of a procedure to access real-time numbers, like at the time of contact. So that they know whether there are beds available at that moment, right? And so it's not just a, a map between your point in time count and shelter space available, it's actually at that moment. And if there's something available. At the time that the contact is made and the person is offered that, and then they go choose to avail themselves of that opportunity, then they would be in violation. The, the ordinance because shelter space is available and, and they're, they're not active. And so that's how most cities have been enforcing those, and they, they create a system where officers are able to access those.
So what I think might be prudent is getting at least like a median count of the last, I don't know, six months or something like that. And then talk to a nonprofit to see how, how much money would that take to create shelter beds for that number? So that we actually have an understanding of how much funding we would need. Because I, I, I'm with you, Councilmember Frye, I want to commit in this budget. Giving money to creating shelter beds, right? That's like the entire point of this Ninth Circuit case is to incentivize cities, communities, states, the federal government. To create shelter beds, to create housing. So I think that would be an excellent data point that we could use to move forward. But, but I, I would want the entire council's commitment if we pass something that does have time or place restrictions. To say that, yes, this is X amount of dollars that we're gonna give in the budget.
Yeah, I don't think you have an answer on that, yeah, Kylie, go ahead.
I was just gonna make one comment too, it's like even if we. We got the set shelter space available, if it happens to be at that particular time that there wasn't any available, then it goes back to being unenforceable. So you can't say that we. We tried, and so now we have an enforceable ordinance, it's still gonna be that way, it, it works both ways, I guess is what I'm saying.
Of course, I, I, I just, you know, I don't want to. I don't wanna create restrictions without also saying, yes, with our pocketbook, we also want to create beds. So, so I understand that, but I, I, I think we need to, to allocate some money to this, to this issue.
Honor, do you wanna jump in, I have some quiet time count.
Yeah. I'm proposing that we limit debate on this matter because we now have too many questions to which we don't have the answers. We don't know how much it would cost for the S E I to, to reopen and provide emergency shelter. We are, none of us, well, except for Aaron, experts on, on homelessness and, and what works on it. And I think that it would be a more fruitful discussion if we were talking with people who had actually made this work. And I don't know anyone like that in the interim, I'd really like to just throw money at the Salvation Army and say, please reopen, yes, it's an emergency, thank you Denise.
I'll bring us home, I don't think we're gonna solve that tonight, I mean, I don't think we're gonna get to a ordinance to be able to vote on next week at this point.
And just a really quick thing to, for, to remind us all, that in twenty nineteen, this council passed an ordinance allowing churches and I think other nonprofits. To open up their parking lots to house the homeless. And to date, that has not been taken up, is that correct?
It's not correct.
Okay, my bad.
I mean, I know that my church had people parked.
Great, thank you.
So by the point in time, let me just, just enter a quick, let me jump in, and then I get a path for us to kinda close it up. So by the point in time count for twenty twenty-three. It lists that throughout the whole county, about a hundred and two people in transitional housing, two fifty-seven in emergency shelters and two forty-five unsheltered. And then of that, fifty-eight percent said that Bremerton was their place of residence. So if that helps to have those numbers, then you're talking for Bremerton. Then depends whether you go by population of the county or who is in Bremerton, that gets complicated on, is that the definition of available shelter? The mayor, yeah, if you wanna.
I was gonna say, part of, with all, I hope to reiterate these two. Depends on many partners you can bring in. How much are, are roles, it's gonna be, to just operate a twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five day year shelter. And so we'll have, we're gonna discuss, you know, find, use this building and lease it. Like, do I come to you also first? And how that, where we get money from partnerships to do that. There's, there's a model that's just had its salvation. So I have a model, it considers everything, and whether you knew it or not, a small barrier. They didn't screen for sex offenders or anything like that. And so it was what we had. And so that's what's, now, how we come together with this, this next building that we have in mind. And I'll keep you updated on what, what everybody's nodding on. As far as the budget, again, that's a moving, moving target, depending on how many wraparound services do we want. On, on top of that, I know I've heard that.
So we've got, focusing back on this specific ordinance, knowing it's one small piece of the very big picture. And that we can't add in specific funding at this point, but we can, the budget cycle and other resources. I'm gonna go down this list and just take a quick kinda thumbs up means, you know, thumbs up means. I wanna be able to give the attorney something concrete to come back to us next study session, that we can hopefully bring, bring this home. And so knowing that, let's go through and think of if this is something you would either support, the thumbs up, support being in the next draft ordinance. So we're voting on it, just support seeing, come back to the next draft ordinance. Something you can live with, you know, you know, roll, I don't know about it, but you can live with it, or thumbs down, something you'd really not like to see. And if we go to the list, that might tell us what they to focus on back next time. So for critical, critical areas, again, it should be in the ordinance. So this is what, so critical, well, the critical area already includes, right, the buffer.
Yes.
So it's not five hundred feet from the edge of a critical area, it's the critical area. I think the current, the current Lakewood ordinance has it.
Yeah, I think it hits the nail on the head.
Just that it was current, was currently in Lakewood are critical areas. All right, to see broad support for that. Okay, and then we have designating specific spaces, so I wanna be clear here. In this case, to be saying, this is okay to camp in when there's no shelter space. But otherwise, all other public spaces are off limits.
You only can go in the designated camp space.
I write that designated spaces only.
The right of ways and all that stuff.
When, when no shelter.
Can I just make a comment on that?
Yeah.
Like I see that, we have a model right now for housing homelessness, trying to find, there could be something a little bit similar, right? Where there's somebody who knows where they're available and maybe there's one car spot at that church and maybe another place has two campsites. And then maybe we take that parking lot and there's twenty-five campsites. So you just, you could manage it like that, it's not just go to that dirt lot and live there. It would be, it would just be, you know, well, there's no shelter bed, but there's tents, and do you need a tent? And, you know, it, it could be managed a little bit. And then since we've been talking about funding and stuff, I was wondering if we could, maybe, I don't know if we could get them this year, but could we put money into C D B G? Like our own, you know, for that process to handle.
So your example, your example though is private property, we don't regulate private property, so people can camp on private property with permission from the owners, that's not.
But either way, I'm saying like, it would almost be like a reserved campsite.
That could possibly be managed by kids.
Okay, so either way, yeah, designated space is only one without shelter, just in principle, we work out exactly where.
Great.
I'm seeing thumbs up. And then, yeah, okay. Okay, then this, you know, controlling number, I see five hundred feet written out, I think it's gotta be adjusted. What I see is just as part, part schools and basically back according to our code, I've written out.
Daycare centers.
So childcare or.
Childcare.
Yeah, child, childcare, schools, parks, community, community centers, it's more than center, but that's the idea. And yeah, this number could be adjusted, but let's just say in principle, if we wanna enact something. Have this, and this would be at all, at all time. Whether the shelter space or not.
Critical areas would be all time.
And this would be, yeah, thank you, at all time.
Okay, looks good.
Yeah. First, I'm gonna give a, a little bit of this one.
I'm sideways on that one, just be careful what you're doing on that, I, I really don't like handcuffing the administration. On, on, on that, again, look at a map, we've done similar stuff on zoning and then we figured out, oh, we can't build anywhere because of the, the map.
Well, just be careful, I guess we're, I guess the question is. It, it seems like we could designate a place, but people just can't set up on their own. Is that, would that be it?
But yeah, these are kinda conflicting because if you go with just designate these spaces.
You don't need a shelter, you don't necessarily need it.
Yeah, that's true.
We don't have shelter.
That's true.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, I get it, I also like to think of this. Probably the, or very original camping ordinances were just about people traveling through and, you know, like, like. That camping didn't have a negative connotation, taking the sort of the unsheltered people out of this equation and where can people go designated spaces? So.
We didn't allow camping in parks, that's our current ordinance.
Yeah, you could have, yeah, this is off of it all the time and when there's no shelter space. Okay, okay, so solid majority of thumbs up, so we'll keep that in there, we can work on details next time. Time restrictions, similar to law review.
Yeah.
One extra one's given you too, you can abstain, most of them, all right, cool. And then regulations on manner and structure. Pretty much, I might as well crap, draft ordinance from Lakewood, that already in there or?
Manner restrictions, that was kind of another one, it was, I think Portland had the most detailed, yeah, Portland has the most detailed banner. And it has to do with, what does it mean, like, you know, we kinda, everyone's in the mind when you're talking about this, you have an idea in your head about what camping looks like. And then you know what it doesn't, like what's too far, and they, those places have tried to define that to where it's something beyond what a person needs to be, you know. Sheltered, I guess. Meaning like they have, there's a difference between a circus tent and a personal tent, right? And so we're kind of just define that.
Look, in my opinion, you either have, and I'm not an advocate for the time one, I, I remember in the beginning I said it wasn't. So you either have one or the other, because by definition, if you have the time one, that's gonna limit your structure, right? But if you don't have the time, then there's no limit on your structure, so you need to have an ordinance that addresses manner and structure.
So that you don't build the.
Yeah.
Could it be a space limitation?
Sure, those are, the, the space limitations are like what the footprint can be and that kinda thing, or.
John Anderson windows.
Yeah, certainly, I would thought a whole great continuum.
It sounds that we need a little bit more information on what this could look like, so how about this time it's a must be to give you some more same old of air and restrictions. And it would kind of put those in as things to consider.
In principle, someone, say, building a whole like four by ten shed.
Right.
I think we could, I'm just gonna speak, I may know I'm wrong, agree that's not something we wanna permit. Like that's near being a way extreme, that's clearly not okay to build that on a sidewalk.
They're temporary.
Right. But then obviously, yeah. Okay, so let's put that as a.
I think we definitely, we definitely have to look at that.
Yeah. I mean, this is to, to bring back to us to possibly refine.
I don't know, Portland has the one to go.
Okay, so what's the next one?
And then it's something, there's a question on the definition of available shelter, when we need it, when we don't. And then kinda like distance accessibility, this.
Sure.
I guess the question, is this something we need, we need in our ordinance? Or, okay, we need this no matter what, okay.
It can incorporate the designated spaces as well, you could say that, you know, available shelter means. You know, kind of like what the definition you saw, or designated camping area, or city designated camping areas or something like that. So we can look at this.
Okay.
But what I'm hearing is we're not gonna do this, we're not gonna revisit this next week, we want this back.
Study session, yeah. Okay.
You don't get to miss it.
Yeah, let me sum up and then take a comment. All right, so we have homework on the liquid critical areas, designated spaces, next study session, trying to define exactly what those spaces are. X feet from Y places, let's put a sample language in there and we can discuss specific feet, specific places. And then, same language or definition of structure and available shelter.
So, a question, so on designated spaces only, is that, do you want me to write the code that talks about those? Or you want me to actually look at a map and find spaces?
I think just.
Yeah, yeah.
Just put it in the code as, and then we'll have to.
The administration could do.
So, I mean, actually, I suggest you work with Andrea on that whole thing, whether it's realistic or not, wherever feet from whatever.
Oh, no, so there's, there's the foot restriction on number three, I'm talking about number two.
Oh, your suggestion of this.
I just wanted to make, when I heard the discussion earlier, what I heard is writing in there that. I mean, basically having, like Portland's code says, no person shall use city property for housing or camping, except for the city property is exclusively designated by the city for use. For housing, camping, or in alternative sheltering purposes.
There you go.
Um, so, but you don't want me to like find those places, right, okay, good.
Much, yeah.
No, that's that's a bigger situation.
And it will trigger all the N B.
They must.
Well, right.
They must reference where those places are, find it in a document or whatever.
Well, right, it's just gonna be that those aren't, that the, that the.
Great.
It's in, it's in the placeholder in the code.
Great.
Okay.
Smoke break, okay.
I do, um.
Alright, so the homework.
Our other homework, I think, are really important homework, and this is something that if maybe we should talk about next week at briefing. Is how much will it cost and what pers- what can make it happen that the Salvation Army can open back up? Like.
Like, yeah, services, that's a separate discussion.
Yeah.
I I'm fortunate that it is, the wrong specific ordinance.
You're gonna do that?
That's your. I'm already, I'm already doing it.
Yeah.
The answer depends. It really is, it's like how many rep, how many services we need on site, so it's not that easy to talk about in shelter.
Okay. From my perspective, I love wraparound, okay, sorry, I'm sorry, Quinn.
Yeah, no problem, sorry, it's it's hard for me to see the board on here, uh what, did we agree that parks should be off the table?
So I think that's something we can narrow in on, but yeah, right now, what I wrote down was park schools, community centers and childcare.
I think there's consensus on on parks and then just the the feet limit on the others. Like the schools, the daycares, things like that.
Separate, right?
I thought I felt like a consensus that everybody was okay with saying parks should be off limits all the time. Unless I'm misunderstood.
I think that's correct, yeah.
Okay.
So, so uh my proposal is attorneys will bring back to us with language that says. I don't know, throw in, you can literally write the word X, X feet from park schools, community centers, childcare facilities at all times or off limits.
I I I think there's a separate consensus of no parks are off limits. And then here are some structures that we're thinking there might be a a foot restructuring against, that's that's kinda what I.
Saying, okay, so let me rephrase that, I'm sorry you can't see the whiteboard.
No worries.
Alright, we'll see if we have consensus, um is it all times off limits, it's critical areas and parks?
That that's what I was hearing, yeah.
Okay, and then we would then also consider a separate X feet from.
Yeah.
School, community centers, childcare facilities, a little language.
Thank you, appreciate it.
That change, okay, good, that's messy, thank you. Alright, any final comments?
Yeah, the only point I wanna make is that there are shelter costs and there are service costs. And what I'm talking about right now, at least for the camping space or overnight shelter, is shelter. It's it's the camp, it's operating how the housing, not necessarily wraparound services. At a site where we're gonna have camp sites.
You know, and I'll I'll leave it up to how President Kofman, how far you wanna go, but I'm trying to get you a budget right now and. And since we're, this isn't, we're in, you know, new ground here, new territory. Um and I totally respect your question, I wasn't, wasn't being flippant by said, it depends, it's um just. You know, there's, I think there's gonna be agencies contributing to this this effort. And part of it's gonna be their offering services, part of it's gonna be for the housing, so it's not gonna all just be a separate. Um addiction, addiction treatments, there's gonna be other things. And also part of it's gonna be housing solutions where we might go to trans- transition people into other housing, make more available. If we just do a shelter, um you know, we realize there's, there's gonna be challenges with capacity. We have other things that we can help people, and I heard that was a strong push for that. We can actually transition into other housing, make more availability in our shelter. So that's what I'm looking for, and I think, I think we've got something for you, um I just let me go get you something. No, I I miss one, go as fast as you.
So we could go long in your mayor's report though.
Yeah, as soon as I, as soon as I can, I.
Alright, Eric, and then let's wrap this up and get to our next, the last item.
Okay, so this has all been great, I'm, I'm moving forward. I think it was well worth the time, there's another component I mentioned when I first spoke up, that is coordinating with the county and the other cities. I'll let the mayor work on coordinating with the cities, uh cause he can just pick up the phone and call each of the mayors. Years ago, we met with Kirsten Jewell in the city council, and I have mixed reaction on how fruitful that was. Earlier in June, the county hired Carl Borg as the new coordinator of uh. Whatever is. There you go, new housing and homeless division. Last time I checked, um my property tax statement that that I checked every day. But I pay Kitsap County property taxes, I'd like to see what I'm getting from my money, I'd like to reach out to Mr. Borg. I'm asking you, Council President, do do so and find out how we can coordinate our services, how we can work together. On this, instead of having all these silos, and I know there's things going on that I'm not aware of. And I'm not a homeless expert, I get it, but I'd like to see Mr. Borg.
Already, already, um when he got in the position, sent him a note congratulating him and um saying we'd love to see you, Council, I don't, okay. We're back on that one, I'll go check, I'll reach out again, um and then, yeah, mayor as well.
Yeah, I'm already working with the county, they they are my, are are closest partners, and so um. And the one tenth of one percent is being discussed, and so as a funding source, so I want you to know that. Um and, you know, I have a meeting scheduled with them, it's a big move when you start shifting, prioritizing this way. Um to this this crisis, that's what I'm working on right now, and if you'll just let me do my part um to get you a shelter. Um in the services that we're talking about, um you know, I'll, you're gonna get in, I'm gonna propose something to you.
Into early and often, it's fantastic, so, that's right. Um, alright, so we'll wrap it up there, so what I'll do, um for both public record and Quinn, uh is translate my handwriting to writing. So we can put it in the packet, um and we'll get that sent out, um then I'll make sure to reach out again to Mr. Borg, um come talk with us. Alright, thank you all for, yet another difficult one, only a couple items, but very meaty ones.
Three hour mark.
And, yeah, uh, well, we're well paid, I'm.
We can pummel here, there's just.
We can pummel, we got the last one here, which I've already punted on a bunch, so I'd like to make a little progress on.
Going down to my car.
Yeah.
Where there is food in the glove box, you're going to get that.
Alright, how about we convene at eight ten, seven minutes?
Okay, it's, okay, that's a different thing, the clock, eight ten?
Eight ten, yeah.